I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting on Monday, October 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, One Met Calf Square. This meeting is being televised. May I have the roll call, please?
Okay, as soon as I find it, yes. All right, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri? Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Present. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Swope, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing that we have no public comment, no public here to comment tonight, we have no delegates and visitors, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 19th, 2022?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Swope, seconded by Ms. Petrie. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Three minutes from the last meeting, from September 19th, 2022.
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to move up the new business of the memorandum of agreement between the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Teachers Association?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Swope, seconded by Ms. Petrie. I don't know that we need discussion on that, but was there any discussion on moving that up? Hearing none, can I have a roll?
Yes. Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
The question is moving it up, yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay, having moved that up, may I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Teachers Association?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Petrie, seconded by Ms. Leonard. May I have a, we are now open for discussion. We have our attorney, Paul Hodnett, here tonight to walk us through this agreement.
Chairperson?
Yes.
I just want to recuse myself from these discussions.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes.
I'll give you, to begin, a little history of how we arrived at where we are tonight. We're here tonight to approve a three-year agreement with the Winthrop Teachers Association. The collective bargaining agreement expired on August 31st of 2022. We began negotiations in January of 2022, but in earnest, really, the negotiations started in late March. We had 11 sessions between January and September 21st. The teachers ratified the agreement last Wednesday. The only act left to take place is for the school committee to approve the memorandum of agreement. And the memorandum of agreement provides for a three-year agreement that will go into effect on September 21st of 2022 and run to August 31st of 2025. It provides wage increases on the basic teacher salary schedule of 2% each year, two, two, and two, on the base salary schedule, in year two and in year three. In addition to those 2% colas, there is what I would describe a market adjustment of $750, but only for those teachers who are on step eight of the salary schedule. So a teacher on that salary schedule would receive the 2% plus the $750 market adjustment in year two and in year three. In addition to the cola, there is a longevity increase in year one, but it only applies to a limited number of teachers in the bargaining unit. It applies only to those teachers who have 30 or more years of service in the system. And the increase runs from $1,800 to $2,500 in year one. In year two and in year three, the other teachers in the bargaining unit, at whatever step they're on, would receive a $100 increase in their step. That $100 increase would not include the teachers who are at 30 years or more in step two and three, though that class of teachers only going to receive the one-time increase. Well, they'll receive it each year, but it'll only get bumped up in year one and stay at that level. The collective bargaining agreement, in addition to having wage increases and longevity, there are some appendices that are attached. Appendix A, Appendix C, Appendix D, excuse me, Appendix B, C, and D. Appendix B is, contains the wages that the coaches and assistant coaches are paid to perform their duties on the athletic field. In year one, there is no change to the current Appendix B. In year two and in year three, under Appendix B, the coaches, the assistant coaches, and everybody else contained on that appendix will receive an increase of 2%. In year three, that same group of employees will see, will receive an increase of 2%. Appendix C is the part of the salary schedule that deals with non-sports extracurricular activity. And again, in year one, there is no change to that appendix. In year two, in year three, there are 2% increases. So that is consistent with the 2% increase that is being granted on the basic wage scale. And to be quite honest, it's much lower than what the rate of inflation is right now. Appendix D is a wage schedule that contains a stipend for mentors and lead teachers. There was no percentage increase granted, but a flat dollar amount. In year one, the lead teachers will go from $1,818 to $2,000, and it will stay the same for the remainder of the agreement. The mentors will go from $1,372 to $1,535, and it will stay the same for the remainder of the agreement. Also included in that appendix is an hourly rate. Sometimes teachers are asked to do extra work and they're paid on an hourly basis. Under the current agreement, that hourly basis is $35. Throughout the term of this three-year agreement, that $35 rate will go to 42, 44, and 46 over the three-year period. The, one thing that the committee should understand is that the superintendent has the ability to determine when those positions are needed, so that to the extent that the jump from 35 to 42, 44, 46 seems accessible, the school department has the ability to control when and if those positions will be needed. That's, those are the wage increases, or compensation increases contained in this agreement. In addition to that, the memorandum provides for what I would describe, and what's called in the agreement, as family illness days. Currently, as all employees in the town of Winthrop and all public employees, the Winthrop schoolteachers accrue sick leave each year. They have a right to accumulate that sick leave. Up until now, that sick leave could only be used when a teacher was actually sick themselves. Under this agreement, the teachers will be permitted to use their sick leave for 14 days each year for illness of their family members. Understand that currently, under the federal law, all employees, if they're more than 50, all employees of an employer with more than 50 employees have a right to 12 weeks of family medical leave. In Winthrop, up until now, it has been unpaid. In other school systems, they provide for a separate type of paid leave. Understand that in this particular case, the teachers are going to be using their own sick leave to access the family illness days. In addition to the family illness days, there is parental leave and birthing leave under the Family Medical Leave Act or the Parental Leave Law in Massachusetts. There currently, in the contract, a birthing parent would be able to use up to eight weeks of leave, provided that birthing parent was in fact disabled by the birth. And the non-birthing parent, at this point in time, could use their personal time, but could not access their sick leave. Under this agreement, the non-birthing parent will be able to use 15 accrued sick days or personal days. Again, it is their leave, they're only being allowed and being permitted to use their paid time. The birthing parent will be able to access eight weeks of sick leave and potentially up to 15 personal days, assuming that that particular teacher has in fact had the foresight to save their accrued personal time and has that 15 days available to them. If they don't, and hadn't saved that personal time, they would not be able to access that time. Those are the leave changes under the current agreement. In addition to that, there's, there were some language changes as it related to association activity on school property. During the term of the last agreement, there was a Supreme Court decision that's referred to as the Channis decision. It struck down the agency's service fee regulations in the country, in particular in the state of Massachusetts. As a result of that, the state legislature passed a law that granted to all public employee unions the right to access and perform certain things and have access to the email, public employee property, to hold meetings, to hold grievances. That's required now by law. We have agreed with the union to incorporate some of those provisions into this collective bargaining agreement. And that's essentially the memorandum of agreement that's in front of you tonight.
Any questions? Okay, hearing, hearing none, any, any other discussion?
I, for the record, I think it's important to note that Mr. Luteri has recused himself from this vote. I, I think that should be in the record because of the, an opinion from the State Ethics Commission, since Mr. Luteri's wife is a teacher in the school.
Okay, thank you for that. As somebody who worked on this agreement, this is the result of many, many weeks of back and forth and very good discussions with our teachers. I think that it is both reflective of our budget constraints and also the respect that we have for our teachers and our desire to support them and to encourage them to stay here and also to be able to attract other teachers. So with that, if there's no other discussion, I will ask for a roll call.
Anyone make a motion first?
We have a motion to approve the movement.
The motion is the same?
Okay.
I'm new to this job.
Okay.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
And I've noted that Mr. Luteri has recused himself.
I believe our motion passes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank Mr. Hodnett?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work this week. Thanks to the subcommittees.
You've had a lot of meetings.
A lot. Eleven.
But who's counting? All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve warrant SPW 25-05 in the amount of $143,535.03?
Motion, second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, seconded by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 23-05 in the amount of $841,557.64?
Motion, second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, seconded by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Stand.
Mr. Martucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 23-06 in the amount of $774,658.88?
Motion, second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, seconded by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Stand.
Mr. Martucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes. Did I skip over 05A?
You skipped over 05.
May I?
05A, yeah.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 23-05A in the amount of $2,230.46?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Luteri, seconded by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 3-06A in the amount of $1,610.40?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Luteri, seconded by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? And Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have no budget transfers tonight, we have no buildings and grounds requests, we have no subcommittees, but do we have a superintendent's report?
We do, it's been pretty busy around here. So I'll start with news from some of the schools. So Gorman Fort Banks is grateful to have the staff and parents who volunteered to serve on the school's site council. So the first site council meeting will be held on October 19th, and those meetings run from 2:30 to 3 o'clock, and they're open to the public. After several years of not being able to offer this program, fun at the fort, the Gorman Fort Banks School is looking forward to starting that program again, and it is starting this week, so we're very excited about that. The Gorman Fort Banks had, school has hired a part-time clerk to replace Mrs. Conway, we're hoping to onboard her this week. Mrs. Conway is now our payroll clerk, and we welcome her to the central office. She started last week and is getting settled in and getting trained and, and working hard. The GFB continues to look for building-based substitutes. This person would need to be available from 7:30 to 2:30, and any member of the community that's available or interested can reach out directly to the Gorman Fort Banks School. Another Gorman Fort Banks reminder is that all Wednesdays in the month of October are early release days. Gorman Fort Banks staff is looking forward to this Wednesday's professional development, which is focused on maximizing the use of interactive technology to enhance instructional practices. And after that, the remaining three Wednesdays are set aside for parent-teacher conferences. The Arthur T. Cummings School, Erin McGee Petty, who is the daughter of a former employee, longtime employee Judy McGee, is the author of several books, Thelma Bee in Toil and Trouble and the Peculiar Haunting of Thelma Bee. Erin came to school, I had the opportunity to meet with her, I haven't seen her since she was a little kid, and now she's an adult. She met with all of our fifth-grade classes and inspired our students about writing and how becoming an author can change your life. She brought several of her books, we have a set in each classroom, and we have extra books in our library. She also spoke, spoke to our students about the process of writing books. The kids were engaged and, and excited to have somebody from our town write a, a fun book that they now all have access to. The ATC had Viking Pride Day on Friday, the students proudly wore their Viking colors and gear, and we raised $186.54 for the hurricane victims. And this week, we are starting at the Cummings, planning for Kindness Week. Kindness Week is October 17th to the 21st, and more details will be coming out for families in the coming weeks. At the middle school, Northeast Vocational School is going to be presenting to all of our eighth-grade students tomorrow during their specials. Students have an early release, release day on Wednesday, the 5th, for all parents and community members with restaurants to be aware of. And Picture Day is going to be for this Thursday, the 6th. At the high school, the Activities Fair took place last Thursday, all the students were able to head into the gym and hear about all the activity groups that they could join at the high school. College Fair is next Thursday at 6:30. I've attended that every year so far, really great take for our students, you do not have to be a junior or a senior to attend. We encourage the ninth-grade kids and 10th-grade kids to walk around, get a sense of the different schools. We have over 50 schools participating this year. Curriculum Night is scheduled for Thursday, October 20th, at 6 o'clock at the high school. And just a reminder that in the month of October, our 10th and 11th graders will be taking the PSATs. That was some up-to-date school information from the individual schools. I also wanted to inform the committee, after meeting with the leadership team this year, we would like to have principals come in and do some short presentations in our next upcoming meetings, giving information pretty building-specific. So each principal coming in, providing you with some curriculum updates, building updates, facility updates, professional development, new programs, and just some highlights of their schools. So we have a schedule that I can send out to the full committee, but we're looking at Mr. Crowby coming on the 17th of October. We'll be doing an MCAS summary on November 7th with all of our members of the leadership team. On November 21st, Ms. Pearson will come and speak to the committee. December 5th, Mr. Curly. December 19th, Andrea O'Leary. And on January 9th, Jenna O'Connell. Sort of a, a new little project that we felt might be helpful, not just to the committee, but also to the families and the public, to hear directly from the principals. In the area of staffing, we still have a few open positions, crossing guards, we can use as many crossing guards as we can get. We continue to need substitute teachers at every level in ESPs. If anyone's interested, they can contact our office here at, at Town Hall at 617-846-5500, or you can contact the school building directly if you would like. All the telephone numbers and contacts are on our website. Quick update, just about some budget things that are looming out there that I think the committee should be aware, be aware of. I put in your packet something from Operational Service Division, so OSD is the agency that sets the prices for private special education schools in, in the state of Massachusetts. And every year, we get a notification from them, a couple of different notifications, one about what they expect the rate of those schools to go up at, and they set those rates at the state level, the school itself doesn't set the rate. And then there are, occasionally throughout the year, we get something called a secondary rate increase, which might be a specialized program rate approval. If a school is doing large construction, they typically let us know a year in advance that it's going to be beyond what the average rate of inflation is for those programs. In all my years, I have not seen it rise above 3.5%. And so that is a, a good predictor as you move forward in the budgeting process every year. I think probably every superintendent and PPS director and the Commonwealth were put back on their heels when we got this most recent OSD notification, in which they informed us that they were going up approximately 14%. 14% is the highest rate I have seen in all my years. At the superintendent level, I sit on the North Shore Roundtable, which is superintendents across North Shore, and we oftentimes take on projects that we can band together with, to bring to the legislation, to the legislators and talk about the impacts of such things as this. And a rate of inflation like that in a school district the size of ours, a rough prediction is about $235,000 of unanticipated costs. And that's, you know, that's two to four, depending upon the placement of students, that's the cost. So a rate increase of that high has really shocked a number of communities. If you look at the Swampscots, the Huts, the Hudson's, the tri-town districts, you know, or the smaller school districts, it's a huge hit. So we, as a, as a board of, of superintendents, are going to be working together, along with some other identified groups, to speak to, to our legislators about the impact, because the state sets that rate. And when the state sets that rate, they don't necessarily give you back additional money on top of that. So if they're setting the rate, they need to know about the impact it is having on, on all communities. Currently, we spend overall for our, all of our out-of-district placements about $1.6 million and change. So if you take that and put 14% on that, you can do the math, and it's over $230,000. So we're planning for that, looking at, being very careful with the circuit breaker reimbursement monies that we have coming in, and being mindful that we may need to allocate more of that money than usual to next year's school budget. So just wanted to put that on your radar, more to come. When we get a final notice, I will let you know if it could go down. I'm hopeful that they are giving us the high end of it, and hopefully we will have some movement at the legislative level. Some other increases that we're keeping an eye on as we begin, believe it or not, planning for next school year, is electricity and gas. And if you're watching TV, whether it's going to happen or not, there's going to be a, an apparent pretty good hike in gas and electricity. So we are working with our contingency funds and really just being mindful of where that may lead us during this school year, and having to watch those lines to make sure month to month where we're able to find some funding in our own school budget. And it's not like you find it like it was hidden, it's cutting something else to make sure you can move that money around. So I just wanted you to know that we are being quite mindful of that. We also, just an update on negotiations, tonight's, tonight was a nice update. It is a relief to have the teachers' contracts settled. I'm very grateful to all the support from the school committee, from attorney Paul Hodnett. from Attorney Paul Hodnett, from Laurie, and other members of our team in working with our teachers' union and the number of other unions that we're working with. It's endless hours of time that are very, can be very powerful, and we've made a lot of progress. But it's a lot of time for folks like you who volunteer your time to come and help do that. So I'm grateful to the committee for showing up and doing the hard work that it takes to settle a contract. We have six more to go. So you get one down and six more to go, and you're all excited for about a minute, and then you say, okay, we're going to do this six more times. So just an update, we have ESPs on the fifth. We have cafeteria session one of their bargaining committee meetings. We have been negotiating a contract that was sort of out of time prior to this. That has, I believe, is going to be voted on this week, so we'll be able to close out the past and then start anew with the cafeteria group on October eleventh. We'll be meeting with the nurses on October thirteenth, tentatively the custodians on either the eighteenth or the twentieth of October, and then the cafeteria again on the twenty-ninth. So I'll update the committee. It has been lots of emails. I did put together a nice list, and we're continuing to cross off the list and add to the list. So I apologize for multiple emails, but we want to make sure we have those postings and that we appropriately settle the rest of our bargaining agreements. And then one other item is vehicles. So the town lot across the street from here, that's that hidden lot behind for kids only, it's sort of the land of the dead vehicles. And it's where we send the vehicles that we are no longer using with the intent to surplus them. So at the present time, we have four buses that were leased to own by the school district over the past, you know, fifteen-some-odd years. So there's a two thousand and nine, that blue athletic van that has seen its day, and probably saw its day about five years ago. I think it's been sitting out there for about two. We have a two thousand and five, small yellow school bus that Wayne used to drive. For those of you who don't know Wayne, that bus, you can't really step in it when you go through the floor down into the drivetrain. So we're going to surplus that one. And then two white vans that we used for special education transportation purposes. One's a two thousand and eight, and one is a two thousand and eleven. Typically, we would write a letter and surplus those to the town, and then, not really sure what they did with them. There's a surplusing thing that they do when people bid on them and purchase them. I've worked with the town manager, who has a different program that's more beneficial to the town in terms of, almost like an auction. So working with the town manager on getting those auctioned off, all of the materials, all of the letters have been created. I don't believe they need a vote, because I think they were voted on in the past, but they've just been sitting there. Patty's doing that research. If not, before they go to the auction, I will ask for a vote of the school committee to put those on the auction block for people to buy. People will come out and buy the tires if they're decent or portions of those vehicles that they think they can use. And typically, according to the town manager, that brings a little bit more revenue back in than it would if you would just otherwise surplus them. And I don't know, Ms. Powell, if you want me to go through these, I'll wait till all the little highlight notices in the back. Do you want to wait till the end?
Yeah, we can wait till the end.
And that is all, yeah.
Okay. We have no appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leaves of absence tonight?
We do have a couple of postings.
We do have a couple of postings, okay.
Just a few. Middle school homework zone position. Those are after-school positions. Middle school robotic coach position. Building-based sub at the Cummings. And building-based sub at the Gorman School. And the part-time secretary position, that posting ended, so that does not need to be on there anymore. And we do not have any leaves of absence at this time.
Okay, and do we have any homeschool applications?
We have one homeschool application that I recommend that you approve this evening.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the homeschool application that is recommended by Ray Galavan?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, we've already covered our new business. Our unfinished business needs...
Hopefully, this is the ratification of the cafeteria contract that was from July first of two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. We've had many meetings, and then there was some delay with their side and their attorney that was representing them. I believe they were going to ratify their own contract this afternoon. So at the next meeting, we should have that available for you to take a look at. And I'll be able to fully explain that when that one comes through.
Okay, very good. And do we, we have public relations.
Yes, do you want me to go through them?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm on a roll tonight. So October twelfth is, we'd like you to join the Gorman Fort Bank School and other schools. It's National Walk to School Day. So this has gone out to many of our parents. It is on our website. It speaks to where you can gather. And then each individual school is sending out their own separate information about where parents can gather to do group walks, if they would like to, on their website. So I trust that those will be coming out soon. The Class of two thousand twenty-three announces a sneaker fundraiser, which I can tell you I will be contributing to. September twenty-sixth through November thirtieth, they're collecting new and gently-used sneakers and athletic shoes, including cleats, golf shoes, et cetera. And there are designated boxes off, designated boxes in the front of Winthrop High School, and you can drop them off there. You can also contact the school if you need support in grabbing those out of your car. That's also on the high school website. There is a twenty percent night at Hong Kong, and that is Saturday, October fifth, and that's to support Winthrop High School Student Council.
That's October fifteenth.
Oh, October fifteenth, sorry, you are correct. October fifteenth on the website as well. There is a Class of two thousand twenty-three fundraiser. It's the Winthrop Viking Blanket Pre-sale. I'm going to tell you, those blankets are the best ever. They're so heavy, and they're so warm. And if you sit in a rink, you can wrap yourself up completely in one of those. That is on our website, too. They are sixty-five dollars, but please go on the high school website, and you can figure out exactly how to purchase one of those. You can use Venmo, or you can contact folks. Couple of cool things happening with CASA. I met with CASA last week, Leanna Ruzioni and Amy and Jen Reth, and we talked about a number of things that are happening. This is one of the partnerships that we have with outside community groups that has really taken off. So a few things that they're doing, senior college mentoring for young adults who are applying to college for the two thousand twenty-three enrollment, starting on nine-twenty-seven, on Tuesdays, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. They'll be hosting conversations with students and parents, if you would like. And that is on the second floor at the E.B. Newton. Again, that's on our website and Facebook. Middle school drop-in by CASA, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from three-thirty to six, and that's at forty-five Pauline Street. They have free video games, arts and crafts, snacks, just kind of group activities. That is on our website as well. And also, what went out this week from the high school was teen programs run by the YMCA. The high school is definitely adding a lot more to their parent notification to let folks know about stuff that's available at the school, but also things that kids can make themselves, attach themselves to that might be outside the school. So the YMCA teen program talks about having opportunities for kids to join a leaders' club, an achievers' club, and a youth government club. So jump on our website for that as well and take a peek at that. But they've really been pushing that information out to parents through Google notices. I know that I get them every day to my home email. And they're very informative, and just different opportunities for different kids, making sure we're not just focusing in on one or two groups, but focusing in on all kids. And those are the public relations for me. Any other public relations?
Yes.
I just want to mention, going through these negotiations with the teachers in particular, I just want to congratulate Lisa and her staff, you know, and the teachers. It takes a tremendous amount of trust on both sides to make this work. It would not have gone as well had we not had support with you all and the teachers. And I really, I so appreciate that, because we would never have gotten to the settlement that we've gotten to if it hadn't been for the courage and commitment of the staff, teachers, community, and my fellow group here. Take care.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And I will also mention...
Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things. And the superintendent mentioned this earlier on Erin McGee Petty, who came to the schools and was so well-received by the kids. And just a tremendous kid, great family, Winter Public School kid. Now, this is, I think, her third book, and Thelma Bee: In Toil and Trouble, and about an eleven-year-old, sixth-grade little girl and her adventures. But I would encourage parents to take a look online and take a look at getting this book for your child. It's a great read, and it's just so well-written, and Erin's just such a great kid.
It's on Amazon. It was sold out, they were sold out the other day, but they're restocking.
And on a different note, I just want everybody to keep the Chavez family in your prayers.